So we'll call this meeting to order. At two o'clock on October twenty-sixth, we'll start off with the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Councilmembers Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Coots.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, opening ceremonies, Pledge of Allegiance. We have the flag somewhere. Ms. Vanderwell, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Forbid you please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And you know what? I just blinked. I'm so sorry.
And to the Republic.
The Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've had that happen before.
I mean, right in the middle. I'm so sorry.
Things happen to me. Comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment at this time?
I'm going to read the opening announcement, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll ask for public comment if that's good with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the Sparks City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and twelve point one. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. Public comment will also be open for public hearing item ten point one. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by your name or by the telephone number you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comment, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorder- disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us. And at this time, if anybody would like to participate in public comment, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand with your Zoom app. And I do have two emailed in public comments also, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Dear City Council, Forbush is not a white supremacist or racist. These statements are false. He is a minority officer. See, in the Supreme Court of the State of Nevada, case number three seven eight zero four, Frederico Martinez Campos versus the State of Nevada, Order of Affirmance. When it comes to the journalists reporting of Forbush, journalistic integrity must be questioned, applying the five core principles of journalism: truth and accuracy, independence, fairness, and impartiality, humanity, and accountability. To avoid a conflict of interest, journalists should not act on the behalf of any special interest groups. Words and images can cause harm when published. It is up to the readers to draw their own conclusion. Readers must question all sources. All journalists stand to financially gain, but at whose expense. A journalist must be professional and responsible to admit error. The articles appear unfair and biased against the officer. The question is, will Forbush receive a public apology? One appears warranted. Yours truly, Chris Integris. The next one is kind of long. I will try my hardest to get through it. Dear City Council, members of a hate group Reno Cop Watch made the complaints against Officer Forbush. The FBI states a group's primary purpose is to promote animosity, hostility, and malice against persons. It advocates and practices hatred or violence against any other designated sector of society. Members share an intense hatred of authority and of the government. Its primary purpose is to slander and defame police officers. On August second, a member stated, damn, he was my next project, but you beat me to it. Rock on. On August seventh, a member stated, turnaround is fair play. How-to instructions regarding the officer's address and family is posted. On August twenty-sixth, a supporter of Forbush stated Reno Cop Watch from a group of equally violent humans hiding behind anonymous Facebook accounts and giving out his mother's address, et cetera. No. Members cyber stalked Forbush by utilizing public transparency, using the bait-and-switch tactic. The tweets were not coincidentally stumbled upon. The tweets were shared to substantially increase the risk of harm or violence to the officer. Officer Ryan Gott of Reno PD is another cyberstalk victim. An officer does not waive the right to privacy, and they are entitled to freedom of speech used synonymously as freedom of expression is a human right. Bob Conrad, Ph.D., is licensed and certified with the Universal Accreditation Board. Megan Simmons with the Nevada State Board of Examiners for Alcohol, Drug, and Gambling, both who wrote articles against Forbush. Laws impose a higher duty of care on some professionals. A doctor must not only act as a reasonable person would under the circumstances, but must also act with the skill and professionalism that a similarly trained doctor would exhibit under the circumstances. Conrad's and Simmons' prospective license boards should determine if there is violations of professional code of conduct and ethics of their multiple roles acting in reckless disregard in the dissemination of the mass-produced false statements in the articles defaming Officer Forbush, determining whether their licenses should be permanently revoked based as a potential threat to the public as they have the tool to reach a mass audience. A public apology should be part of their disciplinary action. Published written matter innocent of its face, when coupled with extrinsic facts which render it defamatory, may, in some jurisdictions, constitute actionable libel. The allegations may be in bad faith and fictitious. Any and all complaints against the officer should be dismissed. The findings of the investigation should not be disclosed. An equal balance for the public and law enforcement must be created. Only badge numbers provided, not personal information. Nevada should follow its sister states. Citizens and taxpayers should have funds, should not have funds wasted on fictitious accusations or allow harassment of our officers that may jeopardize their safety. Citizens are in safer hands of the FBI, DOJ, state, and federal courts. We do not need such individuals to be judge and jury as they have no authority. Thank you for your time and your service to our community. Sincerely, Deborah Chapman.
Any other public comment?
And I'm showing none at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item five, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Councilman Dare, seconded by Councilman Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to item six, six point one, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the city, Spark City Council meeting, October twelfth, twenty twenty. Looking for a motion or corrections, additions.
Mr. Mayor, I'm listening to approval of the minutes.
We've got a move.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilwoman Vanderwell, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on. Seven, item seven, announcement, presentation, recognition, items, and items of special interest. And we're going to start off with a proclamation on seven point one, Careers in Construction Month. Ms. Vanderwell, do you have that up?
I do.
Okay, take it away.
Okay. Whereas, Careers in Construction Month provides an opportunity to increase public awareness and appreciation of construction craft professionals and all construction trades, and whereas during during this month, employers, associations, and schools are encouraged to conduct events to inform students of the many employment opportunities available in the construction industry. And whereas, the construction industry is the fastest-growing industry in the silver state in terms of percentage growth and stands as the state's fifth-largest sector in total employment with more than ninety thousand jobs, and whereas organizations across the state work to share opportunities for training and information on the construction industry which lead to long-term rewarding careers in construction, and whereas the silver state is proud to honor the construction industry and all construction trades and recognize the critical role they play in the economic development of Nevada. Now, therefore, I, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty as construction, as Careers in Construction Month in Nevada.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And normally, swear we say, is there anyone here to accept this? Oh, well. Okay, Mr. Coots, you have items seven two to seven five.
Yes, sir. I am here to announce a total of seven vacancies on various boards and commissions, six of which are for upcoming terms, and one is for a partial term. Starting with item seven point two, the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, we have three upcoming vacancies there for two-year terms, ending November thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Vacancies are for the following areas. We're looking for one member with a humanities background, one member with a performing arts background, and the final vacancy is for a member with a visual arts background. Anyone who's interested in in these positions needs to file an application by five P M. on Friday, November thirteenth. Seven point three is for Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee, and we are looking for a one vacancy to fill a four-year term that will run through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. The vacancy is for a member of the construction industry. Applications of that position will be accepted through five P M. also on November thirteenth. Item seven point four is for the Sparks Planning Commission. We have two upcoming vacancies there, each for four-year terms, also running through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Applicants need to be a resident of the City of Sparks. They also need to be a registered voter. Applications for both of those vacancies will also be accepted through five P M. on November thirteenth. And then the final vacancy, item seven point five, is for stepping into the Technical Review Committee of the Washoe County Home Consortium. It's a single vacancy there for a partial term that will run through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Applicants need to be a Sparks resident but are not required to be technically proficient in the in the work that the Technical Review Committee works on. Applications for that one are due this Wednesday, the twenty-eighth of October, by five P M. Anyone interested in serving on any of these committees should complete a community service application. The easiest way to get to that is through the city's website, which is www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commission or Committee, fill out the form, and press submit. Thank you very much, Mayor Lawson.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item eight, consent items. Anyone wish to take a consent item out of, pull up consent item? If not, look for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
Mr. Abbott. I'm muted again. I move to approve consent items, eight point one to eight point three.
Thank you. Looking for a second. Seconded by Councilman Dare. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on. General Business, nine point one. Consideration, discussion of possible approval of the mayor's appointment to be the Sparks Planning Commission, the appointment to the Sparks Planning Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. It's Claire Androla, Richard Oriendo Ortiz, Candace Beck, Marilyn Kramer, Kelly Lucetti, Jim Mormon, John Novak, Reed Peterson, Ricky Radrikas, Ara Ilkins, William Seward, Alan Sterling, and it's a far for me to read this far away, Joanne Tierman, and Kyle West. So. Well, you're muted yourself there, Neil.
Hit it again. For the record, Neil Coots, your city manager, we're just awaiting for the the mayor's announcement as to who's choices, and then we will ask for council ratification. So, Mayor Lawson.
Well, and I will tell you that I thank you, number one, to the public. I think we got twelve or thirteen applications for this position, which is pretty outstanding. I interviewed a short list of five, and out of those five, I think all five of them could do the job, but the one that kind of rose to the top for me was Kyle West with his experience in in planning and all around the rounded. And then didn't hurt that he went to Colorado State.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make the motion?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Move to appoint Kyle West to the Spark City Planning Commission to complete a partial term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
An emotion by Councilman Anderson, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think he's going to be good for us. Thank you. All right, item nine point two, discussion, presentation discussion of possible approval of an employment agreement, A.C. five seven oh six with Chris Crawford for the position of Chief of Police, effective November ninth, twenty twenty, with a yearly salary of one hundred ninety-nine thousand fifty-six dollars plus benefits. Mr. Coots.
Good afternoon again, Mayor Lawson, members of the City Council. Neil Coots, your city manager, for the record, here with an employment contract for hopefully soon-to-be Chief Crawford. As you know, our previous chief, Pete Croll, retired as of the first of the first of October, so we looked inside the organization. I conducted a series of informal interviews and talked to members of of the police departments, members of the community, and yourselves as well. Coming through that, I did recommend, or am recommending, Chris Crawford to be our next police chief. In that vein, I have negotiated an employment contract with him, and the details of which are, you know, as as it says in the title there, the the pay is one hundred ninety-nine thousand and fifty-six dollars per year. It is has an initial term running through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one and is intended to be a two-year recurring agreement unless unless I choose to to not add a second year back on. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that that you all have.
Questions from the council? Mr. Dare.
Mine's more of a statement than a question, but I just want to say, and I know it was very good sitting down and chatting with Chris, Deputy Chief, I should say now Chris, I can't call him chief yet because we don't vote on that, but but I would just say I appreciate his approach, and I really do appreciate his willingness and his he's been working with the community for a long time on a lot of the things we're talking about, and I know that's one of his focuses, and I think he's going to be a real good fit. So it was it was really exciting to sit down and chat with him and hear his ideas, his approach, and these can be around for a while. So, good choice.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Bybee.
I'd like to echo Councilman Dare's comments, having lunch with him and really getting to know him a little bit better. I think he's exactly what we need at this point in time for our law enforcement. I think he's very thoughtful, has incredible credentials, master's degree, and a bachelor's degree, and so his leadership and the education behind it, but really his, my impression of just where where his his demeanor, his focus, and his personality, just, I think he's very thoughtful and very open to looking at what we can do to even become better as a city and as a police department, and I appreciated that. I think I thanked him for the fact that he's stepping in at a difficult time, you know, for our law enforcement, and I think he has the leadership skills and ability to really do what we need to have done right now. So I'm excited. I'm excited. I I think he's going to be a great, great leader, and I'm looking forward to what what he brings in this role. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, definitely second everyone whatever, whatever it just said, but you know, just from communicating with him over the time, you know, I think for all of us is relatable is, yeah, it's so nice to shoot an email off and get a reply back, you know, someday, same, sometime, same day, or else, you know, within twenty-four hours, and that's just, you know, that's all Chris is, and it's so awesome that we have someone like that. I were looking at other new chiefs, and and our previous chiefs had that too, and just it's a characteristic that I really do appreciate, just, you know, when we call, you know, even for all of us, so we can call each other, call him, and you answer, and he can answer our questions, and that's an awesome, just wanted to give a shout out for Chris, and I think I would also go to the public when, you know, when you're reaching out, you know, Chris is available to to interact with you and talk to you. So, I'll happy.
Hey, anyone else? All right, well, I'm going to add my two cents in here. So Sparks continues to have this grand tradition of hiring from within and training our future leaders as they come up through our organization, and Chris is a prime example of that. You know, we expected he also to be on the job a little bit longer than than he was, but thanks to the training and the dedication that Chris has had, he's done a wonderful job for us, and I have absolutely zero reservations with him stepping into the job as chief. And I think that Mr. Coots made a very wise choice there in promoting him. So if there's no other comments, and I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to approve the employment contract, A.C. five seven oh six, with Chris Crawford for the position of Chief of Police, effective November ninth, twenty twenty, with a yearly salary of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand fifty-six dollars plus benefits.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Vanderwell?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, chief, now we can call him chief. So. All right, moving on. Nine point three, presentation discussion of possible approval of of an employment agreement, A.C. five seven oh seven with Allison L. McCormick for the position of Assistant City Manager, effective November ninth, twenty twenty, at the yearly salary of one hundred seventy-five thousand plus benefits. Mr. Coots.
Good afternoon again, Mayor Lawson, and members of the City Council. For the record, Neil Coots, your city manager, here with a very similar item but for a different position. This time, we're talking about the Assistant City Manager vacancy that was created earlier this year. I had a series of conversations with folks in the community, inside and outside the organization, and landed on on bringing forward an employment contract with with Allison McCormick. You all know her well as an Assistant City Attorney on our staff currently, and look forward to bringing her across the hallway, so to speak, and and having her grow her skills. She suffers from that 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 sickness in that she wants my job. And and I'd say something that I want to see us do as an organization is to continue to promote from within, to plan for the future in terms of succession planning. We all want to leave this, leave the city better than we found it. I know that's not only a staff-level opinion, it's your opinion as well. I believe it's an opinion that that Allison shares. So based on that, I negotiated an employment agreement with her. Her starting salary would be one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. It has the same initial term as now Chief Crawford does, running through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, and and then is intended to be an automatically renewing two-year agreement unless unless I choose otherwise. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from the council? Or comments? Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just first want to thank you, Mr. Coots, for reaching out to all of us, engaging the public, and talking to a lot of different people on these positions. So whether it's Chief Crawford or Ms. McCormick, I I want to say I I believe you've brought two very good candidates to us, and likewise, I believe they're going to be serving in our community well.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Vanderwell.
Yes, I like to say, I'd like to echo what Councilman Anderson has said, but I'd also like to share, I've had the pleasure of working with Allison with Planning Commission, and she is wonderful to work with, very much a professional and knows what she's doing. So, Mr. Coots, thank you so much for bringing her into the city manager's office.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Dare.
Yeah, I I think, I mean, obviously, I think she's going to do great. Well, she's proven that in in other other realms of what she's done. But I think the the ability to build a hire within says a lot about all of our employees and the workplace we have, and and the fact that even Reno would try to sometimes steal our people actually does the same. And so I want to just say, we we have, we really do have an incredible staff, and I know that we're always looking to say, is this a, is this a place we should pull somebody in? And I think those are things to look at, but when we do have such great employees right in our midst, I think that's wise. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Bybee.
I'm pretty much, I'll agree with what everyone is saying. I will add that I find Allison to be very very thoughtful in her advice that she's given us when she comes before council, whether it's legal briefings or Ramadanis. I I can tell she she knows she knows her stuff. She's super smart, really smart, very thoughtful and calm, and maybe sometimes in your upper management and especially the roles she'll be taking on, that intelligence and the calm ability to do her job probably will serve her well and will serve the city well. So thank you, Neil. I'm excited to have Ms. McCormick move into that position.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Once again, good hire here. This this fills out two big holes we had in the upper management, and I think your choice was excellent again. Senior manager Coots, and I'm looking forward to working with Allison more frequently than we did when she was across the hallway. Going to be wonderful. So with that, I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the employment agreement, A.C. five seven oh seven, with Allison L. McCormick for the position of Assistant City Manager, effective November ninth, twenty twenty, with a yearly salary of one hundred seventy-five thousand plus benefits.
Okay, got a first, got a second by Councilwoman Vanderwell. Any further discussion? All right, see, none. It's the hard part when my tongue gets tied. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, I'll do item nine point four, and I see Mr. Martini has popped on the screen, so I'm assuming that he gets this one.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson, and members of the City Council. John Martini, your Assistant City Manager for External Services before you today, seeking your ratification of a grant award to the Food Bank of Northern Nevada in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. Several months ago, the the Food Bank did make a request to the city for grant funding to provide food security to the folks here in our community during this time of COVID. Staff did work with Food Bank to come up with the grant. It was presented to City Manager Coots on October fourteenth of of this year, and he did award the grant for the following reasons. He found we staff presented him with the terms and conditions that were of the grant that were reviewed by staff and found to be acceptable. The grant will provide services that are needed by our community in the in the time of the COVID pandemic. The services provided through the grant are needed right now, and time is of the essence. And certainly, as the council has heard me say before, the Legals now of using the CARES Act money, these funds are appropriate for this grant. The grant award is necessary expenditure to ensure the public health. The costs were not accounted for in our fiscal year twenty or fiscal year twenty-one's budgets, and all expenditures will incur, be incurred between March first of this year and December thirtieth of twenty twenty. And with that, staff is recommending approval, and I'm available for any questions. And I think we have Nicole here today as well.
Questions from the council?
Um, yeah, this is Christopher. Nicole, I just, can you talk to a little bit about the larger need that you guys are seeing? Just part of that, I I want to allow other people to be able to hear that out loud. So if they want to get involved and help, I'm sure you need more than seventy-five thousand dollars. So you might talk to them for a second?
Sure, thank you. Nicole Lamboli, President and CEO of the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, and we are so grateful for your consideration of this grant request. We are seeing increased numbers. Our service area is ninety thousand square miles, of which Washoe County and the two incorporated jurisdictions count for about seventy-five percent of our service needs. In fiscal year nineteen, we were seeing about ninety-one thousand people on average for fiscal year twenty, which ended June twentieth. We were seeing one hundred and six thousand people monthly. In April, right as COVID really hit the community, we served one hundred and twenty-eight thousand people. That is an amazing number, given that even at the height of the recession, our highest number was one hundred and three thousand. So COVID has had a direct impact on people's food. So COVID has had a direct impact on people's food insecurity. But prior to COVID, many people were faced with making household decisions about their budgets. And food was often one of those things that suffered. But the Food Bank, with the generosity of uh our community, uh, we were able to meet that emergency and supplemental uh food assistance needs. Um, in the city of Sparks, we have thirteen um partner agencies. We operate nine mobile harvest uh distribution sites. And we have eight schools that participate either through the Backpack Program or the Pantry Program. And in fiscal year twenty, we served or we provided about one point eight million pounds of food um to those sites in the city of Sparks. As well as that accounts for about one point five million meals. So the need is definitely there. And we would love to end hunger, but in the meantime, we're going to meet that the needs of those individuals. This grant will help us purchase food. It will also provide some repairs to some equipment that has been heavily used um with the volume of food we've been moving and also support um some labor uh to move that food into the community to meet the needs of um families and individuals. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Anyone else have questions? Okay. Um, see no more questions, then I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Rabbit?
I move to ratify agreement AC dash five seven zero nine for a grant award for the city of Sparks to the Food Bank of Northern Nevada in the amount of seventy five thousand dollars.
Looking for a second? Second by uh Councilwoman Vanderwell? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
You.
It's good, uh, that's a nice program. All right, moving on, nine point five, consideration discussion, possible approval of a professional services contract AC five seven oh eight for construction administration, testing and inspection of the East Prater Way Storm Drain Project with Atkins in the amount of two hundred sixty eight thousand three hundred thirty four dollars. And Kevin Porter, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson and uh members of council. For the record, Kevin Porter, Utility Manager. And uh, if you'll recall, at the September twenty eighth City Council meeting, uh, council approved the construction contract for the East Prater Way Storm Drain Project. And uh, this professional services contract is complimentary to that work. As Mayor Lawson mentioned, this is with Atkins and it's for construction administration, testing and inspection associated with the construction work. Uh, if council will recall from the presentation on the twenty eighth, uh, the scope of work that's included with this project consists largely in part of a um twenty-four inch force main and a large concrete uh storm drain lift station. Uh, th- those two items, in terms of the inspection and the testing that's required to get those constructed uh according to the plans and specification is not the uh the type of work that our in-house Public Works inspectors do on a routine basis. And uh because of that, um uh, we felt that it was uh well worth well worth the um the money spent to bring on Atkins to perform that inspection for us and ensure that the force main, that pressure pipe that will be going beneath Prater and then that that large diameter concrete lift station that will be going uh below ground at the intersection of Prater Way and Vista Boulevard is uh is constructed uh per the plans and specifications. And uh, with that, the um the fee, as mentioned, was just over two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. That comes out to approximately six and a half percent of the construction contract. And after staff reviewed the the uh proposal submitted by Atkins, we feel that that uh price uh fit uh matches accordingly with the work that they will perform. Uh, I will mention that um once the the force main is constructed and the lift station's constructed, there will still be a substantial amount of work that um includes uh repatching the roadway, some um surface concrete work with sidewalks and medians. And that is the, that is the type of work that our Public Works inspectors are um experts at. And so if they uh if they have the um schedule availability to perform that work, depending on what other work is going on uh throughout the city, uh, if they are available, they will um come in and perform that inspection work. And so that would reduce the ultimate amount of the fee that we would uh be uh paying Atkins at the end of this project. And with that, uh, staff recommends approval of the contract. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions for Mr. Porter? Okay, see none, I'm looking for a motion then.
I'll make the motion. Got a move to?
Right.
Move to approve the professional services contract AC five seven oh eight for construction administration, testing and inspection of the East Prater Way Storm Drain Project with Atkins in the amount of two hundred and sixty eight thousand three hundred and thirty four dollars.
Okay, got a motion, I'm looking for a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Vanderwell? Any further discussion? Seeing none? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Okay, moving on, nine point six, construction, construction, consideration, discussion and possible adoption of Resolution three three six seven, supporting the acquisition of the Govern- Governor's Bowl Park in Reno, Nevada for an emergency homeless shelter site. And I think that one is Neil, or is Armando coming on?
I'm on, I'm here, awesome. Uh, Mayor Lawson, members of the City Council, this is Armando Arnellis, the Assistant Community Services Director. So uh, per the the title of the resolution, this is in fact asked the City Council to adopt that resolution in support of acquiring the Governor's Bowl. Uh, that's located at fourteen ninety eight East Seventh Street. And this is uh being considered as a future location for an emergency shelter for persons experiencing homelessness. If I may, I'm going to share my screen. Uh, so you can see the location of the Governor's Bowl site. Uh, it is outlined here in red and it is located uh just southwest of the uh intersection of uh I eighty and I five eighty. And um in September, the Community Homelessness Advisory Board voted unanimously unanimously to request that local government staff initiate discussions about acquiring the site with the Nevada Department of Transportation, which is the property owner. The Advisory Board approved a resolution which is very similar to the one that is before you today uh and also asked that each of the three local governments uh approve uh similar resolutions. The Reno City Council has done that, and tomorrow the Washoe County Commissioners are scheduled to consider a similar resolution. Uh, there are two primary reasons an additional shelter site is needed. The first is that uh the COVID nineteen pandemic has reduced the safe operating capacity of existing shelter facilities, such as the Community Assistance Center on Record Street. And as a result, uh, these shelters are currently operating at or over capacity. An interim shelter has been erected on a site on East Fourth Street. And you can see the location of that also on this exhibit where uh where uh my pointer is uh just below uh the the title for East Fourth Street. So that's expected to be temporary for this winter. A second reason that uh additional shelter capacity is needed is that the number of persons in our community who are experiencing homelessness has been increasing significantly. And that situation has only been exacerbated by the recession that's been triggered by the pandemic. These needs have led to a search for sites and local government staff with Reno's staff in the lead have identified the Governor's Bowl Park as the preferred location. It is well located and it is large enough to accommodate adequate shelter capacity, as well as provide for the potential co-location of other service providers to the homeless. A shelter can be located on the site, subject to approval of a special use permit by the city of Reno. The cost of acquiring the Governor's Bowl site and constructing a shelter um are still to be determined, but they would ultimately be based in terms of their allocation on a regional cost sharing agreement. So to conclude, this resolution provides a formal expression of City of Sparks' support for acquiring the Governor's Bowl property. And city staff is recommending approval of the resolution. I, as well as Mr. Krutz, are available to answer your questions.
Questions from the council? Armando, I can't see if you could take here, there you go. Thank you.
There you go.
Questions from the council? Yeah, uh, Charlene, Ms. Bybee?
Um, I I think, I guess my biggest concern uh because some of this, we're hoping to use some CARES Act funding for, so our timeline is really tight. And I I guess, I guess a resolution is needed, but it just seems like it's taking so long for this to happen. And can it happen quickly enough? So I guess what is our timeline to actually set something up in Governor's Bowl? And obviously, the cost, we still don't know, so that's a concern. But I guess the timing of how long this whole process is taking, will we be able to use some of our CARES Act funding for the acquisition? At least, I know the services and additional costs probably after the first of the year. But what are we looking at timeline to get things set up and actually operational, at least initial stages at Governor's Bowl?
All right, I'll 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 take that question, Neil Krutz, for the Record City Manager. It it, in in terms of of CARES Act, um, you know, we we are looking to have the site acquired and the sprung structure, kind of the, you know, the the higher end temporary structure purchased within the 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 timeframe, within the December thirtieth timeframe that the CARES Act is allotted. And then we would work to get it set up, you know, hopefully before that December thirtieth, so that we can we can, you know, claim the the setup monies as well as against our CARES Act fund. But you know, everybody involved understand that the, you know, the clock is, the clock is ticking. Here we are sneaking up on the end of October. So, you know, we we are concerned about that. And uh, you know, but we're all, all three agencies are working together to get this accomplished just as quickly as we can.
You might want to unmute yourself for a little.
I was on my way. So this is, this is hard because one of the things we know we need and it's, it's but I am concerned about uh come January. So I'm concerned as we walk forward. I I thankfully, in a sense, we have this COVID Care Act funds that we were able to potentially move forward. And that's, that's all makes sense and everything. My my concern, if you could just speak to and I I how how do we look i- in this next role? Our finances, you know, the county has finances that come in for these particular things. We have some that we get some grant money for that we can put towards it. But our grant money is not going to go up, but that the ask is going to go up from some regional approach. I mean, are people understanding this? Or do they just think we're gonna find? I mean, I'm in the C-HAB meetings and I approved, I agree that we were talking about this, but I still now I'm putting on just on my Spark City Councilman hat going. Uh, how how do we do this in the new year when we don't have extra money?
You know, that's a, that is a a very good question to which there is not a good, well-defined answer at this point in time. You know, a- 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 as you know, council member, um, you know, at the at the C-HAB meetings, we are, we are talking about increasing the, you know, the 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 number of caseworkers that we're having and increasing the ability to provide wraparound services to the homeless members of our community. And in doing that, acknowledging that there's going to be an added cost to do that in in kind of round numbers, we are, we are contemplating and we're expecting roughly a doubling of our operational budget to provide that additional level of services. Uh, and that's, that's gonna, you know, we, we don't strictly speaking, know how we're going to pay for all that right now. Uh, you know, it could come uh in the form of uh of each of the three agencies, essentially looking to double its its amount of uh of contribution into that. Uh, it could look like, uh, you know, the, looking more towards Washoe County as the, as the main provider of indigenous services in our community uh to to pick up more of the lion's share of that. Those are conversations that still need to happen, uh, certainly at the, at the staff level and then at the elected level as well. You know, it, right now, in, again, speaking in round numbers for for the operational budget, we put in somewhere just north of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year into the, into the operations of the of the Community Assistance Center. And and at this point, if we're going to double that operational budget, you know, the the easiest way to look at that is, well, our three fifty becomes seven hundred. And then we have to ask ourselves, where does that money come from? We we are anticipating a tight budget year coming forward, not having room for for many new needs or expanded needs is however you want to term those. Um, so that's going to be something that we're going to have to wrestle with as an organization as we get into our, into our budget process in in the coming months. But I also think that this is a a really good time at the elected level for the three agencies to have conversations, you know, about uh who is the lead agency? You know, where does the, where does the regulatory uh authority lie? Where does the regulatory responsibility lie? And where is the appropriate budget uh going to come from to make all that happen? That's, that's not an answer that any member of staff can give you. Um, it's, it's going to be a a decision that gets made by you as our policymakers in the three agencies that work together to provide these services.
So just to complete that thought, thank you. That was actually really, I like, I appreciate what you just shared. But I I'd like to just make it kind of clear, in a sense, as much as we all very supportive of what we need to do for a region. We know potentially because of of COVID money what we can do now. But saying yes to this and just officially on the record is not us saying, and we have it for next year and the years to come, we can just double our thing. We are not saying that because I have no idea how that's expected of us. I don't necessarily even agree that it's expected of us. But with that said, uh, we want to be team players, we want to be a part of it. But I just, I I, as we move forward, I love that we're working together, but anyway, with that said, I'm just gonna repeat myself. But it it is, it is a frustrating situation for everybody. This is very difficult and we want to do the best. So thank you, and I I appreciate you being at the table. And I I do agree, it's on the political level and with with all of our uh region that we really need to need to come together. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Just uh from my perspective, you know, we have this CARES Act fun funding, you know, and where else, when, and any other year, we would never have three point six million dollars to put towards a homeless shelter. This is the time to do it. And I, and you know, while we don't have all the exact answers, we do have the largest part of it answered in that the the COVID money can build this, and this is a good place for it. It's a centrally located place. It's going to be a nice little facility. And and we're just, we would never have this opportunity again. Because the city of Sparks, three point six million dollars represents roughly five percent of our entire general fund budget. That just can't happen. So, yeah, we, we will have some issues going forward. And but at the same time, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh in addition is a little easier to swallow than trying to get three point six million dollars to build it in the first place. So we'll, we'll figure out the details as we go along. But I I think the opportunity is is here. We need to take it and we need to do it just because i- it's the right thing to do for the long term. All right, so without any other questions? You got my two cents worth from the C-HAB also. So uh with that, I'm looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
The Councilwoman Vanderwell?
I move to adopt Resolution number three three six seven, supporting the acquisition of the Governor's Bowl Park in Reno, Nevada for an emergency homeless shelter site.
Okay, looking for a second? Councilman Dare? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Armando.
Onto uh item nine point seven. And let me get it brought up on my screen. Uh, nine point seven, first reading, Bill number two seven seven eight, amending Title V, Section five point eight oh dot zero one zero E. And then I'm gonna let you read the rest of that, uh, Madam Clerk.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading of Bill number two seven seven eight, amending Title V, Section five point eight zero point zero one zero E of the Sparks Municipal Code to amend the definition of marijuana, clarifying that hemp, as defined by federal and state law, is excluded from the definition of marijuana. A public hearing will be held and Bill number two seven seven eight will be acted upon at the regular meeting of the Spark City Council on Monday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty, at two P M during a virtual meeting hosted by Zoom.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to item ten point one, public hearing, consideration, discussion of possible approval of an order E eight nine five, vacating a portion of an existing twelve-foot wide pedestrian easement located within the Marina Village Plan Development. Marina Village Plan Development, there we go. And And Mr. Erickson, are you going to present this?
I am going to present this. So Mayor Lawson, uh, city council members, John Erickson, your city engineer. Madam Clerk, can I share my screen? A picture is worth a thousand words, in my opinion. But on, on June 24th of 2004, a parcel map established a pedestrian easement through, um, the private properties located, um, over in the Marina Village Plan Development. The, the easement that I'm requesting that we abandon is this red dashed line. As you may recall, um, that, uh, back in 2019, the Sparks Water Bar, which is located, grab my, my little pointer. The Sparks Water Bar, um, located here, was expanded as well as the, the pool deck for the, the apartments, which required the, the path to get relocated, uh, back in 2019. In, uh, June 22nd of, uh, 2020, a, a portion of the rentable parcel was sold by the City of Sparks under resolution R2R3365 to LCG Waterfront. Due to, due to path relocation, we no longer need this easement that falls, uh, you know, that goes right in front of the, the, the building. You know, this is where the, uh, White House Coffee is located. And, and like I indicated, here's the, the water bar and the, the pool deck area. I, just for just, I, I need to read the analysis into the record, um, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
The legal descriptions for the requested easement abandonment have been reviewed by staff and have been found acceptable. Each owner of property abutting or impacted by the proposed abandonment have been properly notified via certified mail as required by NRS 278 dot 40 subsection 4A. The extent of the proposed abandonment and the date of this public hearing were published in the Reno Gazette Journal as required by NRS 278 dot 480 subsection 4B. Staff finds that the public will not be materially injured by the proposed abandements and recommends approval. That concludes my presentation. I believe Tom Turner from the Sparks Water Bar, and I'm not sure if, um, Jeff Holbrook from Land Cap are in the, in the audience here this afternoon. Uh, I just would like to remind, um, Mayor Lawson, um, this is a public hearing.
We're going to go to questions first, then we'll go to a public hearing. Do we, and Mr. Turner, do you have any questions? Or I can't see if you're there.
Uh, yeah, I am here. Um, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, I'm here. I, actually, uh, John was pointing out the deck of the Sparks Water Bar, but the, the restaurants inside the building, but yes, uh, the path has been moved. Hopefully acceptable to everyone. Certainly a nice addition to have it down by the water.
Okay.
Mayor Lawson, Jeff Holbrook, I'm also here. If, if you guys have any questions for me, I might add too, though, the very last little leg of that, uh, that blue path that connects up to the bridge, that's also going to be part of our final development, of the final piece there, uh, that we still own, that has the other docks on, or will have docks on it. But that's also our intention to relocate that closer to the water so that we can, yes, so we can develop that final parcel. We've got preliminary drawings right now for another building there, and part of that plan does push that last little leg and what we see is completing the, the final, um, part of the, of the path towards the water. Um, we hope to have something before staff to look at in the next few months.
Okay. Questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Dare?
I just have mainly a comment of just, uh, I think it's great what the changes down. I think that is exciting to see that restaurant going. It's going to be fantastic. But I even think the detail of what you put in and how you guys are functioning, that place. As we were getting in town and it was a, well, I wasn't sure what that building was before. I, I, I thought it was a skate ramp kind of looking garage that people could use. And, uh, uh, when I first got in town 11 years ago, it was that. And so you guys took that and you've, you've really moved forward, so I appreciate it. Um, on the one piece over, oh, what, what are you guys, what are you guys looking at possibly putting in there?
We are contemplating another residential, uh, podium-style building over there.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. We're just, right now, podiums are expensive to build, so we've gone through a lot of kind of value engineering. And, uh, our same architect that did the waterfront for us has also worked on a conceptual, uh, for that as well. And I think it's four over two, or it might be three. I don't have the plans, but it's a, it's two levels of, of, of podium, uh, parking. And then I think it's three levels, maybe four of residential above that. So, um, you know, we're just at conceptuals, but that's the point where we kind of dive into some budgeting and see if we can, uh, make financial sense of it. So, but we're excited about it. It's kind of our last piece there down at the marina. And, uh, we really want to move that forward.
Just so you all know, I'm all about volleyball courts.
Oh, Tom.
All right, Ms. Bybee?
Uh, yes, uh, first of all, I want to thank both of you for, uh, just a, uh, first-class project. The quality took a tour, uh, in your units there and up on the roof and, and, uh, really seeing your finished product, project with the, uh, apartments. And I guess the only question I have is when is the Sparks Water Bar opening?
Well, that's, that's always a great question. We're, uh, we're, we're certainly shooting before the end of the year. We, uh, we, of course, don't want to open on New Year's Eve or something like that, but, um, we, uh, are going full bore now. We've kind of fixed up all the little issues that the building held as far as, uh, to space and, and, uh, the, the re, we had to sort of redo the second floor because it didn't meet, uh, the proper loads, but, um, it's, uh, it's moving along now. We're starting insulation and sheet rocking, uh, this, uh, this week and, and, uh, we expect it to go very quickly, uh, as quickly as a 15,000 square foot building can go, uh, but, uh, but quick enough.
We can't wait.
I will be up there on Thursday. We're having a pre-con to start the parking lot improvements, which will entail, uh, providing a, a much larger, uh, Tom refers to it as a trash temple, but a trash enclosure to accommodate the restaurant's needs. So that, that hopefully, we've signed our contract with our, our, uh, contractor for that. And hopefully he started in the next week or so out there with that, so.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Okay. We are definitely looking forward to the wet witties when they show up there at the water park. That's going to be fun.
Believe you me, we're looking forward to selling them.
I bet you are. So you're going to pay for that development.
That's right.
All right. Um, any further question, Mr. Anderson?
I just want to make sure, we need to go to a public hearing before we can make a motion?
Yes, we will.
Okay, then I'll, I'll hold off.
Okay, so let's go to a public hearing. The Senator, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody wishing to speak on this?
If there is anybody who wishes to provide public comment regarding item 10.1, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app now. We'll give them just a moment, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
And I'm showing none.
Okay, well, let's bring it back to the council for a motion, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, before I make a motion, I just want to say, um, Jeff, the, the work you guys have been doing out there has been fantastic. The, the whole community is coming together. It's, it's, it's exciting to see, and I can't wait for, uh, the, the latest project that you guys are working on over there, too. Likewise, Tom, um, just like my fellow council members have said, we're, we're looking forward to, to seeing the, the restaurant open and, and us all getting to come, come enjoy what you have to offer there. Uh, with that, I would like to make the motion for, um, move to approve the order E895, vacating portion of an existing 12-foot wide pedestrian easement located within the Marina Village Plan Development.
Looking for a second? Second by Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, guys. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to it. Okay, with that, we'll move on to, uh, item 11. We don't have any. Item 12, comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
If anybody would like to provide general public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, comments from the mayor, city council, city manager? Anybody? Well, let's start with this manager.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. A couple of things I want to, I want to give you a heads up on. The first is for your next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be November 9th. Staff is arranging for three update presentations to be made related to, uh, the CARES Act funding and, uh, and COVID-19. We're looking for update presentations on the renter, or I'm sorry, rental assistance program that we're working with the Reno Housing Authority on. Uh, we're looking at bringing in the, the vendor on the renter mediation program so that you can hear an update there. And then staff will be providing an, an update on the business assistance, business assistance, easy for me to say, program that we, we rolled out a little over a week ago. And so we're looking forward to having all of that information in, in front of you in, in public here in two weeks' time. The second thing I want to announce is that we are planning to have a special city council meeting on November 16th, to allow you to caucus or to talk to canvas, not caucus, canvas the election results from, uh, from, from the November election. We're looking at starting at, uh, at 2:00 PM. And, and given some changes in state law, it, uh, in, in the window that we have to get that vote canvassed, we can't get it done at either our November 9th or November 23rd meeting and, and comply with the law. So we're looking at 2:00 PM on the 16th. Thank you very much.
Okay, comments from the council? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, um, we've talked a few times about our new HOPE team, and I'm not going to take away too much from our, uh, public information officer because she's going to be talking more about it. But had a chance to meet, uh, with several of them on, uh, Friday. And I just want to thank, one, our city manager, our police chief, uh, mayor, and, and likewise my fellow council members for supporting this project. These people are doing some incredible things for our community. And, um, the folks that are working on that HOPE team are volunteers and they're there because they care about our unhoused population. And I'll tell you what, just hearing the stories, um, that, that they have to tell is amazing. They are truly making an impact in our community, and I just want to thank you guys for supporting this. And hopefully, I mean, I realize we've, we've got, um, budget shortfalls ahead of us, but I would love to see that program enhanced to where we can even get it to a full seven days in the week. But I want to thank you guys for, for your help on this.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Bybee?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to briefly, um, thank, uh, city manager Croods and his management team, but especially our city manager, uh, for the work that's been done through the last seven months getting through COVID, uh, has been tough on all of us, uh, tough on our community, our families, our businesses. But I really think the manager Croods and his team, uh, have done an outstanding job of responding to what the needs of our community are. The CARES Act funding that is a godsend for us to be able to do what we can do to help our community and our businesses is, is critical, but just, uh, the job they've done in navigating waters that we've never been in before. And, uh, and my fellow council members and mayor, uh, the team we have in the city of Sparks, that's really, uh, doing the best we can in, um, in, in new circa, in a new COVID reality. And hopefully we continue to move forward. We can get a handle on the, the coronavirus in this community and, uh, continue to improve and move more to a new normal that we would all retire. We'd like to see back to somewhat of a new normal, and so I'm, uh, hopeful for that. But, uh, thank you to all the work that has been done by everyone. Thank you.
I, yes, I, first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, uh, the appointment to the seat that I vacated on Sparks Planning Commission. But I'd also like to thank everybody that applied for that position and to encourage them to continue to apply because, um, planning commission is a great way to start to find out how city government works. And that's where I started, and, um, it's been a great opportunity.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Croods?
I, I want to thank, uh, council member Bybee and, and the, the balance of the council and the mayor for, for your kind thoughts and your kind words about our hard work in this last, uh, in, in the last, wow, now, seven, seven months. Sometimes it feels like it's been about six minutes and other times it feels like it's been a decade in and of itself. It is very much a team effort, uh, across the staff level and across the staff and bridging to the elected official level. One of the things that, uh, that allows us room as a staff to be successful is the calm, consistent leadership we receive from, uh, from the six of you. Uh, and that has been evident throughout this and, uh, and has certainly aided in, uh, in the work that, that we've been able to accomplish and, and given us room to bring ideas forward to you and, uh, and move as quickly as possible. So thank you to a fantastic staff and thank you to great support from all six of you.
Okay, any other comments? Let me just echo what, uh, Ms. Bybee said, you know, it's, sometimes we get in our own, you know, little world and forget, you know, what's going on around us. And, and I know it's been very difficult, and sometimes we don't recognize that when we should. So thank you again to staff and especially to the city manager. Because, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm as guilty as anybody. I, I worry about my own little things in my own head and sometimes forget to look around and, and see, you know, what we need to do to, to keep our employees healthy and happy. I think we're all tired. We're all tired of this. And it's, uh, we just gotta suck it up and keep going. And then we, we don't have any other choice. So let's move forward and let's be happy. That's an order. Okay, anybody else wish to make comments? Mr. Dare?
I just want to say, welcome new chief and our new assistant city manager. So it's exciting, and we officially can say that because I'll vote it on, but, uh, good time. I, I think you're going to be a great addition. Thank you.
You too. Wonderful choices. All right, anyone else? With that, with, with, to quote Mayor Ron Smith, "Without objection, we are adjourned."
Okay, don't go anywhere. Do not leave. I would like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, October 26th with a roll call.
Your person, Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott? Vanderwell?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
Chief Legal Officer Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Crood?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll go to item three, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
If anybody is wishing to provide public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app. And we'll give them just a moment, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I'm showing none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll go on to item four, uh, 4.1, approval of the agenda for possible action. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Uh, I have a motion to approve by agency member Dare. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think you were a tie. Uh, member and, agency member Anderson. Is that a second?
That was a second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item five, 5.1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of September 28th, 2020. Do I have any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Move to approve Abbott?
Uh, motion by agency member Abbott. Do I have a second?
Second, Vanderwell.
The second by agency member Vanderwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item six, 6.1, consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of September 10th, 2020, through October 7th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Anderson?
I have a motion to approve by agency- I have a motion to approve by agency member Anderson. Uh, the second by agency member Dare. I have a, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, seven point one, comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
If anybody is wishing to make public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item seven point two, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer. Any comments? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.
Have a great evening.